Good morning. It is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the July 11, 2018, City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that we have a acting city manager who is our interim finance director. This is not Howard. This is Kristin Simeone. She will be presiding today as well. And all City Council members are present. Please stand first for an invocation and then a pledge of allegiance.
Blessed are you, Lord of creation. You fill the whole world with your goodness, your grace, and your kindness, and your mercy. You nourish us with your attributes, with your grace, your kindness, and your mercy. You nourish us with these attributes which aspire to our souls. May this council and all here present accept your guidance, counsel in all matters coming before this assembly today. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the great public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, John. We have a couple of announcements. First off, next Wednesday at 9:00 AM, we will be having a special meeting on July 18th with one item, which is the RFQ finalization for the city's master plan. So that will be next Wednesday at 9:00 AM. And then we will reconvene as a City Council on August 22nd. We will be taking our summer recess after the special meeting. Is that it? That's correct? Okay, thank you. We have one proclamation this morning, Dedication Day of Trebeu Cottage, which I will present. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the Punta Gorda Historical Society is dedicated to helping preserve the heritage of our city. And whereas since 1997, the society has been at the forefront of the effort to beautify and rejuvenate the Punta Gorda History Park. And whereas the Punta Gorda Port Charlotte-Northport Association of Realtors replaced the roof on the Trebeu Cottage, a structure which was built in 1886 and became the first land sales office in Punta Gorda and which is currently located in the History Park. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim July 17, 2018, as Dedication Day of the Trebeu Cottage, passed and duly adopted in this regular session of this 11th day of July 2018, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And this morning is accepting Margaret Bogardis, and she will say a few words about the event next Tuesday on July 17. Yeah, can you accept it and then you can say a few words at the microphone? Yes?
Good morning, and thank you all, and thank you, City Council. We would like to invite all of you to the dedication next week, Tuesday, July the 17th, at the History Park. We will have refreshments afterwards, and we would like for you to see our beautiful park. I don't know, some of you, it's been there since 1997, but some people say they didn't know we had a History Park. Each one of the houses in the History Park played an important role in the founding of Punta Gorda. And this particular one, the Trebeu House, is where Trebeu, the founder of Punta Gorda, this is his house. It was the first land sales office and also the first post office. So we do invite you to come to the History Park on Tuesday, July the 17th, at 11:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the Realtors who helped out with that project. That's awesome.
Yes, yes. And Marion Lilly is from the Realtors Association, and they put the roof on the Trebeu Cottage.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Okay, next is introduction of Board or Committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a Board or Committee and you would like to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to introduce themselves for a Board or Committee seat? Okay, seeing none, we have nothing under the public hearing agenda portion of today's meeting. So we will move right into the consent agenda, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4 items on the consent agenda. Would any council members like to pull any of those items?
No.
Okay, so citizens' comments on consent agenda items only, which would be two legal invoices and two CHINEP resolutions. Would anybody like to speak on any one of those four items? Okay, seeing nobody rising, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close public hearing. Oops. Move to approve consent agenda. I'm too programmed.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. You wanted a public hearing this morning.
I guess I did.
Okay, now we're into the regular agenda. Don't think this meeting's gonna go this fast the whole time, because it's about to come to a halt. Regular agenda items, which would be the budget status update for sanitation, building and gas tax funds, the general fund budget status update continued discussion, and the millage rate resolution, and then the action register quarterly report. And we also have the City Council time of day, City Council meetings time of day, and date change for September 19th. So any of those items. If anybody would like to speak on anything with the regular agenda, now would be the time. You could take the podium over here to my right. You have three minutes. Anybody that wants to speak on regular agenda items. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the budget, the first of which is the budget status update for sanitation, building, and gas tax.
So good morning. Michaela's going to take care of the PowerPoint slide for me, but I will be discussing the actual budget. Kristin Simeone for the record. So we're gonna start with the sanitation fund. And we put up the five-year pro forma. And again, we do conservative revenues, pretty much like a 1% growth throughout the years. In fiscal year 2022, we do have some financing revenue for the purchase of the capital outlay that was planned. Operating expenditures are increasing based on the same type of assumptions we've made in all our other funds for general fund. So some of those items are like 3% merits, health insurance. We did get the new rates, so that's at 8% for the health insurance increase, the actuary report for pensions, and 10% for workers' compensation. And most other operating expenditures went up, either stayed flat or went up about 3%. And the ones that are a little above, we'll go over that in just a moment. For capital outlay, sorry, there's also one other item, $150,000 for the purchase of a clamshell loader truck. This is in addition to our fleet. Sanitation has requested a second clamshell loader. The current one is scheduled for replacement in fiscal year 2022, but when it's out of service, there's a delay in service to our citizens. And so they're asking for an additional clamshell loader. Our current fee is $21.60. The recycling contract increases 60 cents per year under our current contract, so there is a proposed increase for that same 60 cents to cover that recycling increase. So the proposed fee for fiscal year 2019 on a single-family residence is $22.20.
How long is that contract running for, the recycling?
I think it's a three-year contract with a three-year renewal.
Okay. Where are we at in that?
This will be our third year.
Okay.
The sanitation fund is balanced with the recommended 60 cents recycling increase. And then going into the landfill fees, does have the budgeted increase of approximately $100,000, and that's due to both increased rates and increased tonnage from, there's been new development and stuff in the city, so it's causing a little increase there. And then, of course, we just discussed the clamshell loader. This is the five-year plan for sanitation and equipment program. And currently, everything was the same as presented previously last year, except for the addition of the clamshell loader. There are three packers scheduled for fiscal year 2020, one packer in '22, the replacement of their current clamshell loader in '22, and a flatbed dump truck in fiscal year 2022. Sanitation is going to be reviewing their packer replacement program. They're currently scheduled them at 10 years for replacement. In the past, it had been seven years, and during the economic downturn, it had been extended to do the 10 years. They are finding that sometimes that's a little bit too long, so they are going to research that and come back with a recommendation. You know, it could be eight or nine years, depending on what they find. Also, the other thing they're going to look at is trying to stagger the packer replacements so that they are not all purchased at the same time. So that, like, the last set was scheduled to be a two, two packer replacements in one year and another two packers in another year. However, because of delays in determining which way we were gonna go with semi-automation, the first two had been delayed, so we have four that were purchased in the same year. So they're gonna try and stagger that. So I'll go to the next slide. And so the next slide just shows you what our current refuse and yard waste has been and our recycling scheduled increases. In fiscal year 21, you'll see we have TBD for the refuse and yard waste. We've been at $17 for quite a while now. And based on the pro forma, we're seeing that that is the year we're gonna probably need an increase. So we'll come back to you with information on that. Any questions on sanitation?
I would think everybody's on board with clamshell, because I know when storms are approaching and people do a big trim and you call and it's a week away, I mean, it is problematic. So we really need to keep that service going as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, I don't know. That 60 cents a year on the recycling, though. That's way too much money.
I would like to have our Public Works Director let us know how we're doing on the implementation of the new, with the new trucks and how that's going. Because I'm getting feedback from residents, you know, varying kinds of use of the carts and how we're doing, getting people on board with the carts or getting our staff on board with the carts seems to be sometimes...
They're not using them.
Well, I've actually observed our staff actually opening the carts and pulling the bags out.
Yep.
And not using the carts. But then, I've, when they came down my street, they used the tippers. So it's been not consistent, and I just, you know...
Yes, for the record, Rick Keeney, Director of Public Works, in regards to the last statement about the employees, we had that report about a month ago, and we met with them and had a talk with them. Not an excuse, but maybe a reason. We have a lot of vacations this time of year. We have some people out on sick leave, and we have a lot of temps at the moment. Word may not have got around to the temps. It's been already discussed this morning. I met with the senior crew chief to remind the employees. But we're down four or five staff members right now in sanitation. A lot of inconsistency with employees because of the reasons I just gave. So it's, you know, it's new to the employees. It's new to the residents. We're doing our best to implement it that way. But we've heard you. We're talking to the employees. When we get temps, we don't get the same ones every day. It's a learning process every day, and this time of year is really tough with the temps, because this is when they, they take all their vacations. So like I said, due to illnesses and vacations, we're down four to five people right now. So we have to pull in the temps, and they're doing the best they can. So that's, again, not an excuse, trying to give you some reasons with the inconsistency with staffing we have at the moment. Last council meeting, you heard the discussion on the pay plan about the two employees who left. Those were in sanitation. They left for more money to go somewhere else. There's two more people. So we're, we're at an influx at the moment. We're doing our best to, it's not like we have the same people every day and a full staff and we can keep everybody, you know, trained and know what to do every day. So again, not an excuse or reason. We're doing our best.
Okay.
But we do have most of the carts changed out. We had delivered different cans to different people. Some people didn't like it. We, we explained to the residents if they didn't like the cans, we'd change them out. So we're not 100% done, but we're, we're working on it. We got our load in of the 48, the 96 gallon, like, a week or two ago. So we had to do this. The other rollout was by the company. So our staff, again, is putting the wheels on and we're delivering them as we have them, you know, ready to go out. So hopefully that will be completed soon. And then when our winter residents come, who did maybe get a cart, we'll be rolling them out in, in the, in the fall and winter.
That's, thank you.
I have a question for Rick. One of the, one of the things that came up is that the amount of tonnage that we're, we're taking away has increased. I would just be curious to know what the, the pattern of that is, is if it's even all the way through the year or if it's because more people are staying in the summer than it used to be, or is it because we're having more construction or just an increase in population?
And, and our...
So you want to budget appropriately.
Yeah, and our sanitation supervisor, she tracks that. And it's not scientific, but you can tell this winter, we had a lot, it was booming this year. Commercial, constantly the commercial we're calling up, where some businesses may get picked up twice a week with their dumpster, they're getting picked up five days a week, or it was just booming this year.
Okay.
And again, not scientific. I believe more people are staying just by the traffic and, and the cars on the road. But I think more people are staying. We had 122 building permits last year, so that's 122 more families, and we're at 56 building permits this year. So, so we've got increased homes. Until, until you get a year of statistics on what the new homes are, we don't know if there's one person in that house or four.
Sure.
So we can see the percentages and the tonnage go up. We hope that the landfill fees go down and our recycling numbers go up. You know, we always hope that. But again, it's, it's like a year in the rear is because we gotta get the data, you know, and then we can compare it to the, to the year before.
Yeah, I guess this is just relative to, to your staffing issue. If it's a case where we're taking more tonnage in the summer and we have a staffing issue, because people go on vacation, et cetera, like that, it may be something to, for the city to, your department, which has several types of jobs, to maybe look at a couple of rovers to put on staff permanently. There could be staff, if you will, in training for when an opening comes up. It's just a thought. So I think we're understaffed anyway, so I'll just point that out.
Just one more comment. I did have some residents this week tell me how much they really appreciated our, our sanitation workers and that they are actually the face of the city to our community, and they really appreciated what they do. They always have a smile on their face. They're always friendly. So keep it up.
We'll just work on getting them to use the tippers.
Yeah, our, the crew that comes down my neighborhood is the best, and everybody thinks so. So keep them intact.
I think my crew's better.
So we'll move on to the building fund. So for the building fund, revenues are, what we're doing here for permits is keeping permit revenue flat, and this is because building permit revenue is very volatile. It's based on many factors, such as the values of the home versus, not just the quantities of the permits that are pulled, the type of construction. So we never know where the spikes are gonna be, so we try to be very conservative in our estimates. Operating expenditures, again, we've talked about the same type of increases in the assumptions. Capital outlay is $25,000 for fiscal year 19. This is to add one vehicle for the additional staff that was approved mid-year this year for an inspector. And again, this fund is balanced, so we can go on, with no change in fees. Staff will continue to monitor and adjust staffing as needed, as the activities are showing and reserves allow. And the operating reserves are maintained for future stabilization. Any questions on the building fund? Now we'll move into the additional 5-cent gas tax fund, and this fund is the fund that does all our paving program. Our revenues for, proposed for fiscal year 19 consist of our gas tax revenues and $459,000 transferred from the general fund ad valorem. And our expenditures are always trying to match our revenues there and to fulfill the five-year plan. So for fiscal year 19, the estimate for gas tax funds is $281,000, and it's balanced with the subsidy from the general fund ad valorem of $459,000. The next chart just shows our projections for the five years from the two types of revenues. Okay, yes.
Is, we, we continue to do both paving and bricking.
Yes.
Is there a reason why we're continuing with the bricking? We have a lot of problems with the bricking on the streets. The roads keep sinking. We've got, I mean, if you look at Booth Street out by the hospital, it's a mess. You can't barely drive on it.
Last, the Public Works Director.
I know. It looks really nice if it's in good condition, but overall, those streets really have a lot of issues. And right now at Sullivan and Olympia, it's really kind of a hot mess.
Okay. For the record, Rick Keeney, Director of Public Works, Sullivan Olympia, that's, that's a DOT project that you see. It's probably a stormwater pipe that collapsed. I'm pretty sure. Booth Street, if you go by there today, it's all taken up. Booth Street was probably done 100 years ago.
Yeah.
I don't have the exact date, but it's long time ago.
It looked like it was, yeah.
Okay, Booth Street, by, by action of council, is gonna go back in asphalt. We're gonna do all of Booth Street and, and, and save as many of the bricks we can. Our, our new brick streets, in my opinion, have been holding up exceptionally well, the newer ones. Okay? I'll bring you back to 1980. When I first started, I remember we did a brick street project between Redda and Marion. Is it in the best shape today? No, but it's pretty decent. It's on Berry Street. I hope I mentioned that. But that was when we were first learning. We've, we've grown over the years. We've used better base. We've got some beautiful brick streets. Now, we didn't do a brick street this budget year, and we're probably not gonna get it in, but that's because all our efforts at Public Works were trying to recover from Irma. So we are hoping to do one next year in Goldstein right out here. It's in really bad shape. That's an asphalt street. Back in the 80s, the city did a sewer rehab project. We got federal funds. And a lot, at that time, a lot of our brick streets were lost due to, instead of putting the bricks back, we paved them. So it was, it was the plan, long-term plan, try to do a brick street a year and try to redo the bad brick streets and to recover the brick streets that we lost in the 80s due to the sewer rehab project and paving. Again, that was a council action in the past, you know, but that's, that's our plan. We tried to do one a year, and they hold up very well with the way we're doing them now.
What on average would it cost us for paving versus bricking on an average block?
I have those numbers, but not with me. And there's no doubt, bricking is more expensive. However, it's gonna last you 100 years, as opposed to 15 to 20 years. Because what, the way we do a brick street now, we, we actually are paving underneath it. We, sometimes we put in new curbs. You're seeing a lot of the curbs are in bad shape. Regardless if that was asphalt or brick, we have to address the curbs. So you can't count, I mean, you can't count that. We're still gonna use shell. You gotta do, use shell if you're putting in an asphalt road or a brick, or brick street. But we actually pave. We measure the thickness of the brick, and we actually pave it. So, so all the costs are equal up to then. What's the difference is the brick. We're, we're running out of brick. We, we used to be able to have the brick for free because we, we recovered it. We're now having to buy brick. So I think the last load of brick, and I, and again, I can confirm these numbers, but it, it may have been in the neighborhood of 50,000, and I may be off. So I apologize if I am, but I can get your real number. And then we get the volunteers. A lot of times we get the prisoners. They come and help. Sometimes the city staff. But we try to get half of the brick street laid, and then we have a Saturday. We bring in the community. It's a great event. They get to lay half the street, you know, and finish it up, and they're proud of their community, and it's a great day. So, so yes, it is more expensive, but once, if you do it right, with, with that new base we're using, I, it'll be 100 years, I guarantee. As long as utilities and everything hold up, it'll be a long, long time, and you're not touching it again. And it's, it's our downtown historic district, so I...
I'm asking those questions because somebody mentioned at one of my meetings yesterday that there were apparently some bricks that actually came loose and flew across the street when somebody drove on them, after, probably right after the hurricane last year.
I, I don't know of that. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I didn't hear about it. But that mean, it wasn't called in and we fixed it.
Okay.
And Sullivan, too, you know, that was a mess because it came from underground. It's nothing, you know, it's not the street's fault that the pipe was underground burst. It was a mess for a while, so they'll get it repaired, I'm sure.
I mean, I, I think the brick streets are extremely important to the historic nature, the aesthetics of the city. And to be honest, I think we need to do more brick streets. I mean, it was promised like 15 years ago that both sides of the historic district should have them. So I actually, especially if you're looking at the long term, at actually being one cost and being able to last, that I think it's not only fiscally responsible, I think it's aesthetically responsible that we continue our bricking.
Yeah. And I was gonna, kinda say this, the same general thing. You, you have PGI and BSI, and our attraction there is our canals and our house on it. And in the historic district, part of that ambiance is, is the brick streets, which is why this little town Nirvana of ours has so much charm. It's not just canals that attract people here, but it's also the historic district that attracts here. And I think we need to maintain that character within the city. And if it's prudent in the long term, then we should, you know, pay upfront instead of pay later.
And talking about maintaining, like what he said is that we did pave over some of those streets, so we did give up some that we had before, and it's important to keep that in mind, that we need to bring those back.
Bring those back.
Yeah.
And if I recall in past conversations, we've been told that the brick streets are traffic calming.
Yes, very much.
So it's, that's another advantage.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with them. I'm just, I'm just asking questions that got asked of me. So I, I'm just kinda trying to find out what the history of it was, because it's...
Always good to help our residents understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely evolved, and the ones we've been doing over the last several years are, are very, very nice. But I agree, the older ones are getting pretty rough, so...
Good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? And just so everyone is aware, the five-year plan was included in the agenda item. Again, it's a plan, so sometimes streets will change based on the needs as they come along. But that will be posted also on the website for citizens. Going on to our 6-cent gas tax fund, which maintains the roads, the right-of-way sidewalks. Again, the revenues come from the 6-cent gas tax, and then there's also some inter-local agreements from FDOT for some of the roads that we maintain, that they contribute to. Expenditures are increasing just slightly each year, and the ones that we'll talk about in just a minute on the next slide, if you wanna go to the next slide. So in this fund, the division has asked to increase the sidewalk replacements, $25,000 per year, again, just to help with sidewalks that are just repair. Also, there's an increase in right-of-way cleaning and traffic signal and light repairs due to the Jones Loop. So that was part of the inter-local agreement as well. And then fiscal year 19 through 23 are balanced with the use of reserves. Any questions?
Nope. So at this point, we just, we need a motion for the sanitation...
Correct.
...fee. So 2220 for 2019.
You wanna bring that slide back up?
Move approval of the budget and sanit, for the sanitation, building, and gas funds for 2019 to 2022.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve these funds and fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have the budget, general fund budget status update.
Okay, so going into the general fund, the first slide is just a repeat of one from last council meeting of where we were at, at that point in time. So the 6/29/18 column showed our total revenues at that time, that we had estimated, what our use of operating reserves were and our total expenditures. Since the last council meeting, certain items have been added to the pro forma, to the budget, for the increased revenue from the 7-1 estimate of taxable value. Certain expenditures have been added, such as the CRA transfer, which is also related to the taxable value effect. The actuary calculation for the new OPEB requirement, health insurance increase, because originally our assumption was six and it came in at 8%. And the paying classification study that was included... And the paying classification study that was, um, included, or that was approved last time, which excludes the public safety unions and command staff at this time. Expenditure decreases was the life insurance decrease. And the positions, um, dispatchers, two community engagement officers, the EMS training chief, and the computer support specialist have been removed at this time. So the net change to expenditures was one-twenty-three. So then the second column here just shows you, after all those changes, where we're at with our revenues and our expenditures. And so the use of operating reserves has decreased to four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. This slide, again, um, we're starting with where we were at with our re, ending reserves as of seven-three. So we were at one-point-four-five. And this is the amount that we said was available over our minimum set amount of eight percent. So, um, the eight percent has been taken out of that number. These are all the same items that were on the pro forma that we just showed you. So at the end of that, we are at a one-point-seven-million-dollar ending reserves available for use. Unfunded items that are not in the proposed budget at this time are building security systems, the public safety bargaining and command staff pay plan, citywide master plan, IT unfunded projects, city hall annex renovations, and again, the position requests from the divisions. Are there any questions on any of these items?
Questions for Kristin?
One quick question.
Yes.
If we go back one slide, just, just for clarification, the first item listed, um, the appraiser's estimated taxable value impact. This is the increase in the money that we get from the county from the ad valorem tax bill, correct?
Yes.
From last year?
So it's, um, based on the taxable value and using the same mileage rate that was in the proposed budget, which was the same as last year. This would be the additional revenue that we...
Based on new construction and other things. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was what it was.
Yes. Okay.
Could you go back one slide? So going to the slide prior to this, there's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus increase, or about three-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase in our ending reserves.
Yes.
According to this slide. But then when we go to the next slide, we have about six-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars of unfunded projects.
Yes, and some that we don't even have numbers on yet.
Right. So, yeah, I understand it. But there's about six-hundred-and-fourteen right there right now with the number on it. So if we were to do all that, then the actual reserves would go down three-hundred-thousand dollars rather than go up?
Correct. Okay. And so then, looking ahead, we've always provided you a look ahead at least one year. So we, again, we use conservative revenue increases, um, the same type of expenditure increases. So with those new, um, the positions that had been pulled out, the gap is now five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars in fiscal year twenty. So already for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we are short funding.
So when you did twenty-twenty, did you change the assumptions, like for the, the health insurance and things of that, to eight? Or did you keep it at six?
No, we've kept it at six. And the reason for that is each year, it has been different. So we sometimes, like last year, we did better. I think we were at three percent last year. So we had some savings last year. This year was just a little over.
So you just keep the assumptions the same?
So we're keeping it at six.
Okay.
So on other unfunded unresolved items for future years, again, is the use of reserves to assist in balancing fiscal year two thousand and twenty, um, which was reduced from seven thirteen, um, from seven-three, I'm sorry, because of the positions. And again, staff has recommended, um, in the past, and has been approved by council, to set aside some of those available reserves to balance the next year. So we would ask that again. There's also three patrol vehicles for the new school resource officers. The funding was still to be determined. And again, we'll try and use one-percent sales tax funding, um, if available. Pending legislation for increased homestead exemption for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, um, that's the amendment one that will be going on the ballot for November two thousand and eighteen, um, would cause reduced ad valorem revenue to the general fund. We had gotten some numbers from our property appraiser, and we're doing some calculations. The current estimate of that decrease of revenue is approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So we just got that information yesterday. There's two patrol vehicles for the PD Community Engagement Unit. And again, that's not needed at this time unless those positions are added back to the budget. Any questions?
I mean, that's a big number. That's almost point-two mils from what you showed us last time. Point-one mil is like two-ninety-eight something.
Yes.
So really, I mean, we're, we're already starting out. You had the five-hundred thousand plus that. That's almost a million dollars that we're going to need for twenty-twenty.
Well, and the county, I, we got this letter in our mailboxes the other day. The county overall is going to lose six-million-two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. So that's a lot of money decreased out of the tax budget.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of money.
Those are some scary big numbers, big scary numbers.
Well, people don't realize that it's either going to be in the ad valorem tax bill or you're going to get it on the other side. I mean, it's, it's going to eventually get to you one way or the other.
I think it's going to also, um, cause us to look hard at whether we assess or not. I know we've kept the line on that, and for very good reasons. But, uh, you know, when we, everybody has expressed what they want, so we're trying to deliver on what people are expecting. There comes a time when we have to say, okay, if this is what you want, you know?
I'm staying out of this conversation today. I've been pretty clear.
Drainage.
But thank you. Thank you for bringing it up for me.
No, really. You know, if that's what you want, then, so I, you know.
You're going to get it one way or the other. That's the bottom lines.
One way or another.
That's going to be a big nut to crack, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure.
I still think at this point in time, with, we have some unknowns coming.
Possibly.
So we'll see that could impact this.
And what I discussed with, uh, Kristin in our briefing is, um, as far as the master plan, the security upgrades, the one-time expenses, and she does not, did not want to call them loans, but, you know, that, that that would be paid back. Use gen-, obviously, we're going to be using general funds if the money doesn't come available to, to fund the master plan. And the sec-, you know, the security needs to be done. We all, we all realize that. It's probably, you know, needs to be done sooner than later. It's been quite a while since we've been talking about that. But to use, uh, the general fund and then with a promise that when the money does come through, it can be paid back. Not a loan. What did you call it?
Yeah, I, I didn't want to call it a loan because we don't know when those funds will be available. So there's no term or set on there. But again, we would just fund it until the time we could repay it.
So we would call it like a one-time use?
A one-time use.
Kind of like what we had with the storm?
Yeah.
This one-time-use fund. Because those, that's a big number as well. The master plan is a very big number.
I'd just like to point out that some of the security expenditures that we probably need to do are also related to some refurbishment expenditures that we also need to do in City Hall. Uh, one in particular is a, a window that's back there down that hallway by the, um, safe. Uh, there's a, it's only about three, two feet to get from there, from a little ledge, to get through that window. That window's in very bad shape. If somebody were to really want to break in it, basically, you could just push the window in and, and, and come in at that point. So when we do security, that's something that we're going to have to address. But that window needs to be replaced. It's rotted out. And, uh, there, there's a number of areas in the, in the, uh, building that need that kind of refurbishment.
I don't think any of that's in the, the security budget that we just looked at.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out, this is an observation I made.
Well, that brings up a whole different subject of, of actually a complete analysis of the historic City Hall. It is on the historic registry. And based on, you know, a tour that I had with Karen, um, there are a lot of deficiencies in the building. And perhaps it hasn't been maintained adequately over the years. And I think, um, uh, we need to know what it's going to cost to bring the, bring the building up to standard and what we can, how can we do that and, and maintain the historic registry designation? And that's not going to be inexpensive, but I think it's necessary. So it may be a local option sales tax project down the road or something. But I think, you know, given what I, I saw, I think for the, for our community, our historic nature of the community is really important, and that's preserving the historic nature of the community, so.
Do we have a plan for getting those numbers? Do we have a set plan of what we're doing on that to get the estimates?
Um, do you want to talk about? Sure. Mikael Finkel, um, Paralegal Executive Assistant. I was going to touch on that when we go on the action plan.
Okay.
So this whole project, um, came out of a refresh, kind of to go with our branding. Uh, we went out for quotes. Luckily, we were able to piggyback flooring, paint, just kind of a refresh. While doing that process, um, the numbers came back quite high, and we really realized that there are, in the City Hall building, it needs more than just a cosmetic update. Um, we have some water damage, um, like, um, vice versa, I mentioned. The, the windows need to be done. Those windows are old. They have, um, what we call insulators. When those come off, they can't go back on. So the, it, just, things just kept adding up. So staff's plan, instead of coming back to council with the phase-two refresh for just carpet and flooring to make things look pretty, we decided, um, that we would possibly come back and ask for appropriation to finish the flooring in this room, in the mayor's room, because all the other improvements were done. And then actually get an independent professional inspection of the entire building, figure out to restore it what needs to be done, what that's going to cost. And then, uh, like you said, come up with an actual plan to do that. Uh, we're going to forego anything on the, the annex, because that was basically just to make things match. So I think we, we all agree that there's more that needs to be done in this, this building first before.
And plus with other issues that we have, we know that like the insulation, the, you know, the ceiling tiles, all of that. Especially even in this room, which is a newer section, that it was quite bad. So, I mean, things like that, the underneath parts, um, really need to be addressed. So, so you're going to come back? Somebody's going to come back with a, a, that's good, an inspection plan?
Yeah, we need to work with procurement to figure out what type of, uh, professional we need to come in and, and how to go about that. Um, one other thing they mentioned, we're still working on, and it's in the plan for the ADA, the, the bathrooms out here. The water fountain, that stuff's not ADA accessible. That wasn't part of the refresh budget, but they go hand in hand. So, um, staff's working on those issues too, in the ADA in the building.
Yes.
I think we should regret, we should forego any refresh budget items until we know what we need to do with City Hall. This may sound like I would say it. I don't think we should do the flooring in this, in this room and in the, uh, in the mayor's room at this point in time for two reasons. One is, I think we should find out what we need to do with the main City Hall in particular. Uh, and two is, is so that when our citizens and we do come in, it's a reminder that we have other products that we have to do too. This shouldn't be our priority at this point, this optic. I think this optic can kind of keep our, help us keep our focus on other parts of the building personally. So I'm just throwing that out.
I would agree with that. I, I also think that there's some other things we may want to spread out over a period of time rather than everything all at one time. If we can spread it out over two or three years, it might make the blow a little less. You know what I mean? It's, I, I, there's, there are just some things that I think we can, we can make it a little bit more fluid over a, a longer period of time.
I'd like to say though, as far as refurbishment, I'm not referring to ADA things such as, uh, those. To me, that's always a priority.
Yeah.
Okay. I just...
Yeah, some of them, they go hand in hand. Like, obviously, we're not going to redo anything in the corridor, because when we do the bathrooms, that's going to affect it. So we will take that, um, when we come back with, with some costs.
I can live with the carpet the way it is. I know that would...
I, I would have, I would have disagreed with you before, except that, um, we have redone the ceiling, and I showed most of you that we already have new stains on the brand-new tiles. And so to start replacing the carpet when we haven't even addressed, or we have issues in the ceiling, I don't know what it's come, you know, what's causing it. That needs to be determined before we do anything else. So I would, I would agree that we should forego the carpet. It would have been nice to kind of consider this in the mayor's room sort of, sort of finished. But after, I mean, there's multiple stains, so we have to figure out what's going on.
The improvements that were made in the conference room are great and, and very serviceable. So I think, you know, I would agree.
Yeah. It's one thing to, to do something that's functional versus aesthetic at this point in time. I think we need to be more focused on functional and preservation of our historic building.
And there may be grants available for historic preservation.
And also prioritize, like we did with some of the other budget things. Let's prioritize what has to be done versus what could be done a little later on and, and do it in an order that makes more sense. I think that, I think that would be prudent for us to do.
And I definitely think we need the professional opinion, because just talking about the windows, you know? Are they replaceable? Do you have, you know, what, what are you allowed to replace them with? The, the, you know, historic nature, you know, that type of thing. We really need some professional advice on that.
We also have some brick that needs tuckpointing, probably sooner rather than later in a number of areas of that building. So I, we need somebody to tell us that what our priority should be.
If you don't mind, I would ask that we go back just a couple slides. One more. Are there any items on here, like the building security systems or anything? And then on the following slide, any of the items that we do want to start including in the budget for fiscal year nineteen and two thousand and twenty?
I think the, the security systems and the, the master plan, we definitely have to have in there.
Yes, and the, the master plan, we'll add when we have a dollar amount. But we can go ahead and appro, come back to you with that.
Yes.
Put that in right away.
Don't know how we come up with a dollar amount, but...
Could you, for the sake of, um, prioritizing the security system list, could you provide us again with the list of what we had planned to do for that fiscal year in, in detail?
Yes.
And then maybe put some costs associated with some of those things? And then we can maybe go through that list and say, okay, well, maybe we can push this back a year or whatever.
Sure.
Yeah. That would really help us, because you're talking about a hundred-ten-thousand dollars. That could be twenty-five different projects that all go into that number.
Yeah, we, and what we said the last time was that nothing was totally off the table. It was, this is the list of, of possibilities.
Right.
So when we know more, we can...
Right. I just wasn't sure if there were any that you wanted to add at this time, for sure.
How do we handle that, though? Because security things are not public disclosure, usually.
Well, uh, essentially, you know, you don't have to provide the detailed plans. I think that's what's...
Just the overall projects? Okay.
Correct.
We've had that sheet before. And I think it pared down even more. That's how we got to a hundred-and-ten-thousand, I believe. Yeah.
And this is just the general fund portion?
Oh, yeah.
Other funds are contributing for their areas.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would help us a lot when we start really whittling on numbers.
And then on the next screen, um, are you, um, willing or at this time to put the five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy, or like set it aside for helping with two thousand and twenty?
I don't think we have a choice. I mean...
Well, I, I don't know that I'm... Every year that I've been on council, we've always started every year with a gap. And we've always worked to narrow that gap. So I don't feel, um, having us put that aside, um, I'm not comfortable putting it aside because I know the process we've gone through.
And, and we still do that...
We've never, we've never set aside the money to cover that gap in the previous year.
Oh, no, we have been doing that since two thousand and fourteen.
Well, I don't remember approving it, but...
I mean, it's been in the...
It's been, I've noticed we've always put there, but we've never...
Yeah, and again, it can always be changed later. It's just that we...
We know it's going to change later.
We know it changes, but...
It always changes.
In the last fiscal year, I think it was about six-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. So we worked to get that down. We're at the four, you know, the four-hundred-something thousand now. But, um, we have asked for consensus before for, for quite a few years now to set that money aside, knowing there is that gap and knowing it could, at this point, grow even more. But we do always work to, to reduce that.
I mean, in my opinion, we really, at this point, we, we see the other things coming at us. We don't really have a choice other than to say, that's just going to be the extra reserve that we need for next year. And we're going to, twenty-twenty will be at eight-and-a-half percent. Is that already factored in there? factored in there?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes it is.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it is.
All right, good. So that would be over and above the eight and a half percent?
Yes.
So we're still growing at half a percent a year, and then we'd need the additional five-twelve at this time?
And the reason we've asked before, especially as we've had available reserves over our minimum, is, again, there are many projects going on within the city, and if you just look at that number as a grand total, and don't think ahead about the, the funds that we're gonna possibly need, I guess it's, it's just to preserve those funds for the possible need of needing them in the next year.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna make one comment, I can't. I just think that we as a body have to be cognizant and aware, and be willing to make, show some political courage to say no to our constituency sometimes here in the near future, so that we can control these types of numbers. I, I agree with Nancy thanking her to bring up the subject, but, uh, we try to be, our responsibility is to the community as a whole, and we sometimes may have to make and should make appropriate decisions as a body that may not be palatable to large portions of our constituency, but it's what's prudent for the community as a whole, and particularly when it comes to the funding and stuff in the future. So that's just my general philosophy.
As far as the positions, that's not built into the pro forma for twenty-twenty, or is it the four positions?
It's only the SROs are in there.
Okay.
The other positions have been pulled out.
And the, the SRO cars are not in there?
The, the SR cars are not in there, and with the, just, also with the school resource officers, even though the expenditures are in there as well, there's also revenue covering them.
Right.
So that's coming from the school board.
But the cars were about a hundred and thirty?
Thirty-five thousand, yes.
I mean.
So those are not in there.
And to Gary's point, we just, we just said no to the four positions that we heard justification that.
Right, I'm saying, we need to do more of that.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm saying, we need to do more of that.
We need to work more toward a balanced budget without the reserves included, that's the real bottom line.
Yeah, it is, absolutely.
I think we've all been, yeah.
I wish there was a way, and I said this to Kristen when we met on Monday, that there was, in accounting, in the government sense, that there was a place you could put the reserve funds so that they weren't always a part of the budget discussion, that there's an account you can put this, stash it away.
Well, what the, the county does, that, I believe they have about a twenty-five, twenty-some percent, and they don't, they don't discuss it, it's just the reserve. I mean, we don't have those policies. We could, but we don't. So that's how we've been balancing the budget the whole time I've been here.
Right, so I think if we were to start stashing that money someplace where it doesn't show up as part of the budget, then we can grow it. It's like, now we, it's like, oh, well, it's available, let's just use it.
Well, I think too, the, the philosophy's a little bit different, because if you look at what we do have carrying over, and what we did have set aside for the eight percent, if you add those two numbers together, it's about the sixteen, it's about the sixteen percent. So we're really there, but we're using it for the next year.
Right.
And with the stabilization fund, just to, to bring up a point, that their council or their board would've had to make a decision at some point to move those funds over. So it's just.
Yeah, they have a whole ordinance policy, the whole, the whole thing.
Right, so again, it's not that we couldn't do something like that, it's just that, again, it's still, it's still a, a council decision on what your reserve level's gonna be. Gary?
So I'm gonna add a little something to a dead horse I've been beating for a while. Uh, I've pointed out, and we, we've discussed, that in two thousand and six, our staff was about, per thousand population was about twenty percent higher than it is now.